Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, Papillion City Council Meeting to Order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and justice for all. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight. I'd like to first invite Officer Tackett up, and then he'll guide as well, but Mayor's Youth Council has a presentation they want to make in regards to past presidents, and people are not aware, we've had a Mayor's Youth Council now, it's probably going on 15 years, I think, or right about there. Great, great group. It's a good opportunity for students to get involved. They can get involved as soon as junior high and start participating, and a lot of them stay on all the way through senior high, until senior in high school. Do a lot of great work. Couple of them have been able to go to a couple of national conventions, brought some ideas back as well. They really make an impact on the community, and a lot of it's pretty silent work. So, great, great leadership, and they want to make a presentation tonight.
Hello, City Council. My name is Felicia Plaschek, and I am the current President of this council. Dear Mayor Black and distinguished City Council members, we, the mayor members of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, would like to honor Mayor Dave Black for his continued support and commitment to the youth council by presenting him with a perpetual plaque of all the youth council presidents from when the council was originally founded. The youth council was organized in 2003. It consisted of about 20 members, with Nate Myers serving as the first president. Since then, we have grown to a current membership of over 50 members. Many of our past presidents have gone on to graduate from prestigious colleges, have successful careers in our community, and serve in our nation in the military. Under Mayor Black's leadership, the youth council has become an important part of the city by serving to the needs of its citizens. His leadership has demonstrated integrity, transparency, and the vital roles that youth can play in serving the public. We also would like to recognize a few others that work so hard behind the scenes that really helped make the youth council a success. People like Taylor Barta, Nicole Brown, and Paul Schrader. We also want to thank James Blynn and past city administrators, Dan Hoynes and Chris Myers, who were instrumental in the creation of the youth council in 2003. With that being said, we would like to honor Mayor Black and the city council by presenting you this perpetual plaque with the current and past presidents. Please accept this gift as our appreciation to you for all you have done in supporting us. Respectfully, the Youth Leadership Council.
We're gonna hang this up in the council chambers right at the doors, it goes down, and it does list them all. 2003 and 2004, and 2004 and 2005 was Nate Myers, and that was the first one, he's actually here. Why don't you come up and say something? You were the first president. Come on up.
Just say hi.
Hello. Sure, a lot of you all kind of see me around City Hall and stuff, I've been around here since I was a little kid. Youth council was, I don't know, at the time, I probably didn't realize how important it was, but it was really nice, you know, to kind of get familiar with government, and, you know, we did a lot of stuff with Papillion Days at the time, which had a lot of fun doing, we raised a lot of money and stuff. I'm sure a lot of you might have remembered my singing routine. It wasn't very good, but I tried. Mayor Blynn kind of put me on the spot. You know, really, you know, hopefully, guys, this looks good on your guys' resumes going out, because, you know, that's kind of a big stepping stone, and it looks good, and, you know, you can go places with this, I guess. I don't really have a whole lot to say, I just found out about this yesterday, so.
Thanks for being involved, thanks for being involved in starting it. And Officer Foster and Officer Tackett, thanks for all you do, they are, they're the staff liaison to the Mayor's Council, they've been doing it the whole time. What an impact with the kids, so, thank you all. And thanks for the, to the city council for the support of that program. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. The new city banners have gone up throughout downtown and on the outskirts of town. A big thank you to Kid Glove for designing them, and to Tony's crew for getting them installed. Don't forget to check out the Flights of Honor Tour on display at the landing from September 17th through the 20th in the community gym. And a reminder that City Hall and other city offices will be closed on Monday, September 7th, in observation of Labor Day, and hopefully, everyone gets a, gets to enjoy some extra time with their families. And finally, there'll be a Public Safety Committee meeting at the, at 5:30 PM on September 15th at the landing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, I would like to move item number nine off the consent agenda.
C9 is polled. Any other discussion? Please vote on everything except C9.
Seven eight zero nines.
Motion passes. Next is item C9, Resolution R200152, a resolution to approve the cable franchise agreement with Cox Communications Omaha LLC. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R200152? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, I'd like to ask Legal to give us a explanation of something that I see in the staff report, where that, where it mentions that the, that Cox will continue to provide cable service to city facilities at no cost to the city, but, and also broadcast our, you know, our city council meetings and otherwise, but that in the future, we may have to pay for that because of a recent FCC order that changes these, this longstanding practice. And I would like to ask the city attorney to explain that FCC order, and specifically, whether there's anything in this contract that where Cox says they won't charge us for cable service in the future.
Sure, under the present agreement, the city does receive complimentary and PEG services free of charge from Cox. PEG means Public Educational Government Services, mainly meaning the public access channel. Recently, the FCC adopted an order stating that cities could no longer force franchise cable companies to provide these free services. They said that they, they're entitled to get paid for them. So, when we talked about that subject with Cox, Cox was unwilling to include in the agreement a promise that they wouldn't charge us for these complimentary and PEG services going forward. However, they were willing to just leave it, leave the matter kind of unspoken, and let the status quo kind of continue on in the future until such time that Cox informed us that they not, that they wanted to get paid for it. So, the franchise agreement, as it's written now, doesn't really address that, there's a chance in the future, sometime, that Cox may bring up the issue, and that we may have to start paying for these services. But, for the moment, we'll go forward as we, as we are with free complimentary and PEG services.
Well, okay, okay, now, I, I, it's my experience that, as part of cable franchise agreements going back decades, that this provision has been very common, that the cable company needs to provide, for the benefit of the city, at the benefit of all the taxpayers, have to provide cable services. It's part, you know, it's just been part of the operation. Are you saying that this is something brand new, simply because of the FCC?
Yes, it's brand new just because of the FCC order. Until the FCC order, it was common to provide these complimentary services free of charge. The FCC's put an end to that.
Well, and I, and I certainly, well, I can understand why Cox would not want to give up that ability to get revenue from us in the future. I find that very disappointing, that as a community partner that they have been through the years, they want to keep open the opportunity to make the taxpayers pay them. I mean, they, they get to do business in our city with great revenue, only because we have granted them a franchise. And it's always been, to my mind, a very small cost, small part of that, that they then assist us keeping our expenses down by providing cable services to the city without an additional charge. And I'm not talking about city employees sitting around watching TV during the day. I point particularly, well, to our city council meetings going out, people being able to watch what we do here, transparency. But also, we have several revenue-producing facilities, golf courses, our Papillion Landing, being the classic ones, where, let me tell you, the customers there, the revenue-producing, the revenue-paying people there, expect to be able to have cable TV. I mean, we, we created buildings with the desire that the people come in, and they sit down, have a drink, or have some coffee, and we have TV there that they can watch, for, for all sorts of reasons. Now, that indirectly leads to our bottom line and our revenue. And, you know, to have the federal government now say, "Our revenue doesn't count," that it's somehow unfair for us to partner with this cable company to generate that revenue for the benefit of the taxpayers, you know, offends me greatly. And I, you know, of course, there's nothing we can do about it. Thank you, federal government, I say. And, you know, if anybody out there, I don't know whether this will ever come about, maybe it never will, maybe Cox will say, "Oh, no, we're, we're a great partner." And I probably won't be here when that happens. But, if that happens, and all of a sudden, the city has to make decisions on budgeting money to pay for the cable TV services that have been provided in exchange for using our streets and reaching our taxpayers as their customers, I find that a very unfortunate situation, a change in federal law that completely, you know, gives us the benefit, makes it that the cable company wins and the local taxpayers lose. And I just wanted to draw that to everybody's attention, that that's something new in this contract, it may or may not happen, boy, if it does, I'll be extremely disappointed in everybody. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Mumgarth. I think the Cox should provide that at no cost to us, but, but I would point out that there is a provision in the agreement that talks about the franchise fee, and I think there is a sentence in there that says, "The city may increase or decrease at sometime in the future, provided we give a 90-day service." So, I, I would think that that gives us the ability, that if Cox does come back to us and say, "Hey, we're gonna charge you for those services that they're giving to us at no cost today," that we do have the ability within the agreement, I would think, to potential, unless the, the city attorney tells me, "No, that's not the case," so.
Other than I think there is a statutory limit.
Yes, it says under applicable law, so.
Yeah, there's a, there's a limit of 5% that we can charge them, and we're at that 5% now.
Oh, okay, so it's, we can't go above the, the current 5% that's in the agreement today without a change in federal law? Would that be the case?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, that's another issue. But I would say, thank you very much, Congress, that years ago, they took the view, they expressed the view, that you can't trust local office holders, that they will, they will stick it to the cable companies, and they'll extort money from the cable companies. And so, Congress set a limit as to how much we could do, we could charge as a franchise fee. So much for capitalism and leaving it to negotiations, and both parties deciding, Congress decided years ago, they couldn't trust the wisdom of local elected officials, and they put a limit on us.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
So, does anybody know what that 5% generates for us every year?
Nancy?
And it doesn't have to be exact, I was just...
Rough estimate.
What a, what an approximate would be.
And we can get that for you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have to have it today, but...
We'll get it for you.
But, I was just kind of curious as to what that 5% might be.
Okay. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven eight zero nines.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1896, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multi-Family Residential and MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as attractive land, being part of the southeast quarter of the Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of South 120th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashbury Hills Development LLC. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube, thank you. Item D2, Ordinance 1897, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately 0.255 acres of city property to Daniel and Louise Greco. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Klug. Item D3, Ordinance 1898, an ordinance to amend Chapter 117 of the Papillion Municipal Code to increase the number of allowed licenses for retail sale of fireworks from 10 to 12, to clarify that the city council can approve special fireworks permits and display fireworks permits, and to make the chapter more concise and consistent. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 1893, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as attractive land, being tax lot 24, a tax lot located in part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 36, also together with part of the southwest quarter of Section 25 Township 13 North Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of South 72nd Street and Cedar Dale Road. The applicant is Rose Park LLC. This was tabled indefinitely at the applicant's request August 20th. However, notice of the public hearing for the item was published prior to the meeting on August 18th for the city council meeting, so no public hearing will be held to tonight's meeting, and no action is necessary. Long-winded to say we're doing nothing. Item E2, Ordinance 1894, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 Multi-Family Residential to R4 PUD 2 Multi-Family Residential, with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described. Lots 48 to 57, lots 62 to 69, 74 to 89, and 122 to 125, Ashbury Hills, subdivision located northwest of 120th Street and Shram Road. Applicant is Ashbury Hills Development. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Evening, Jason Thielin, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100 in Omaha. With me is Larry Jobin, who's the attorney for the developer and the development as well, and here, available for questions, should there be some. General aerial and location of where we're at, this is Shram Road, this is 120th Street that heads into Ashbury Farm, Founder's Ridge, and the Ashbury Creek Development's next to it. We're gonna focus on the center of this development with this particular request, as I go through this project. Ashbury Hills was, was platted, final platted a couple of years ago, it's in, this is the first plat that came before you a while back, with some single-family lots just south of Gold Coast Road. And the request is for that replat of this area specifically into some villa lots as a reaction to some requests that we've been getting from developers and builders in this area. It's basically a replat of 40 lots in this area to match that demand within the development. We're taking 44, or 40 of those lots, and creating 44 new lots. The only lot that won't be within the PUD is this lot here down at the corner, that will be turned, and two lots will be made out of this going forward. There's a little outlot here, it'll be part of the legacy home grouping. So, these will all be ranch-style villas. The cost and range of that'll be somewhere between the $450,000 to $550,000 range, as we've seen in the Papillion area for quite some time, so it'll be consistent with that type of unit. This will be a full lawn maintenance product, so, we are requesting the reduction of side yards from 10 to 5 foot, it would be standard with these PUDs that come in, specifically because those homeowners do not want to maintain that lawn, and it is a service provided by the development, so the least amount of lawn, obviously, the better for everyone as we go forward. This is a phased development, two phases of villas. You'll see a notation of a clubhouse in the middle of this project. The first phase is roughly 43 lots, and the second phase, which is yet to be final-platted, it's been part of an overall preliminary plat, is 45 lots, for 88 total lots within this PUD, and a clubhouse. It's got a little sales plat, we've had a lot of interest in this area, this is the first phase, as you can see, this clubhouse lot, currently, within this plat, you'll may have noticed, it's just half of the lot right now. We need to final-plat the lot that's in Phase 2 in this project, and so that will come back to you with a change of zone, once this gets recorded, to create the one lot for the clubhouse, so that can be built within Phase 2, and all within the PUD, all under the same covenants and everything there. We've had a lot of interest in this area, like I said, this shows you the estate lots that are to the north, so this is Gold Coast Road, Ashbury Farm, and then this is that first phase that we're working on, an idea of kind of what the pool will look like. Those, those buildable areas will be, again, pretty standard with the lots we see, there'll be ranch-style homes, discouraging any story and a half and two-story homes in this area. Give you an idea of what these look like here. So, I'm sure these are all pictures you've seen, but, give you an idea of what those look like, maybe some step up, these are all villas, mostly will be one or two steps in, and then zero entry into the house through the garage. The materials list will be fairly standard, a lot of earth tones, brick and siding. The lots that are up against the streets will have a wraparound brick or stone on the lots, we've got pedestrian connectivity through the development in terms of getting to the clubhouse, so you don't have to drive. I'll show you this here. There's a little green space, I don't know if you can see that, but we extended the right-of-way, and that will be an increased landscaping and sidewalk system that, that comes all the way through and focuses on the center of this, of this development as well. We were before city planning commission in April 29th, and we were approved with conditions, we've met those conditions, so we're before here, before you all today. The developer did reach out to representatives of Ashbury Farm prior to the planning commission meeting about a month before, and just said, "Hey, listen, this is going forward, if there's any questions, or you guys need to meet, let us know." He was not, did not receive a phone call from that neighborhood representative saying that, that there needed to be a meeting. We think this is a great addition to this project and to this neighborhood, and ask for your approval, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seen none, I'll close the public hearing. Next is item E3, Ordinance 1895, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R2 Single-Family Residential Medium Density to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as a replating of lots 142 to 150 and 174 to 203 Sumter Crossing, a subdivision generally located on the southeast corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Boyer Young Development Company. Open the public hearing. Proponents?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing now on behalf of the applicant. This is a request for a change of zone to allow for the replating of 39 lots into 49 lots, and this is in the second and third phase of Sumter Crossing. I've got a drawing here, if you can... Thank you. So, the area that shaded here is what we're talking about, those, those were originally 39 lots, we're now replating those into 49 lots. It is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved by this council, the final plat went to the planning commission in, on July 29th of this year. What it does is allows for a kind of a transitional product line, if you will. So, if you recall, what's already approved here is villas with the PUD here in the southwest corner, and then this is a transitional, not larger, but than villas, but not as large as the single-family lots here, although these are all single-family dwellings. The overall density of the project is still very low density, it's 2.2 units per acre with respect to the entire Sumter Crossing development. The, there, the houses that are being called for in this particular area are a combination of ranches and two-story houses. The ranches will range between 1,500 and 1,800 square feet, and will have a value of about $250,000 to $300,000 each, and the two stories will range between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet, and will range between 275,000 and 325,000. So, it's a little transition between the PUD villas and the larger, single-family lots. But what, the lots are a little narrower, but they allow for the house to be a little narrower and deeper, and so that, that is a product that they think will do very well here in Papillion. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R200109, a request for approval of a special use permit to authorize the construction of a principal structure within the downtown overlay district pursuant to Section 205-118A1 and parking facility pursuant to 205-118A6, to add an additional dwelling unit with a garage and associated parking to expand the multifamily residential use established on the property legally described as a north 2/3 of Lot 7 and all of Lot 8, Block 12 Papillion, generally located at 243 North Jefferson. The applicant is Mark Jaxick, 243 North Jefferson. This was continued from the August 18th meeting, and a public hearing was held. Motion to approve Resolution R20019 is on the floor. That was motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Stube, so we're council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I would, I would need to make a motion to lay this over for another two weeks. I will tell you that this past week, Councilman Glover and I met with the applicant, Mr. Jaxick. We had a very productive discussion. You know, we were very candid with him, he was very candid with us about what he wants to do, why he needs to have the design that he's presented. He's agreed to go back and make some design changes to the building he wants to build, and Mr. Glover and I have been pleased with some of the things that he's going to do. We told him that he should put that together, I have new drawings, put it in front of the city council, and we'll give him a fair hearing, but he can't get that done by tonight, so he's asking that we do it, lay it over for another two weeks.
So, we have a motion to table for two weeks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion on the motion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nines.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution, this is related to one previous that we delayed at the request of the applicant. F2, Resolution R20038, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land, being tax lot 24, a tax lot located in part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 36, also together with part of the southwest quarter of Section 25 Township 13 North Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on northeast corner of South 72nd and Cedar Dale Road. The applicant is Rose Park LLC. Again, this is the one where a notice of public hearing had already been published for the meeting, but no... meeting, but no, it had been tabled indefinitely, so no public hearing will be held tonight, no action will be taken. F3, Resolution R20-0145, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City of Papillion, Sarpy County, and SID 301, which is South Brook, for Schramm Road, One Hundred and Eleventh Street to Turkey Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20-0145? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Do you have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion?
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. Item F4, Ordinance eighteen-eighty-nine, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty budget, that's the current budget we're in. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen-eighty-nine? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R20-0147, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve setting the twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-one tax, property tax request. This is a public hearing, do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R20-0147? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. Next year's budget, Item F6, Ordinance eighteen-ninety, an ordinance to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-one budget. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen-ninety? I missed that. Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Glover. As is typical every year, there is an amendment to the request because when the budget was put together, we had preliminary evaluations from the county, we now have final evaluations. So, the amendment is to sync that up. Final evaluations came in just slightly below, so it's about a thirty-five-thousand-dollar difference in the property tax, slightly over that and so we'll be reducing that line item by thirty-five thousand. The offset is on interest earned on other items because we've got some other cash reserves that are sitting there, so the earned interest will make up for that and that is outlined on page twenty-two of your packet. So, is there a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff as outlined on page twenty-two? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Gaines. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
The motion is amended. The next motion is the same one we do every year also, a motion to approve the one percent increase to the LID Restricted Funds Authority, this does require a supermajority and again, the one percent increase is not needed this year, but by approving it now, it does allow some flexibility, especially in a case of an emergency or a global pandemic, if we would have a second or a third one, so it's more preventative insurance than anything else. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilwoman Klug, second by Councilman Jaworski. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote and again, this one requires a supermajority.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. So, is there a motion to amend the unused restricted funds authority from... Oh, yeah. I don't need that one because we just passed the previous, thank you. So, the motion on the floor is the original motion as amended based on page twenty-two, which was syncing up the valuation. Any council discussion on the budget? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. Item F7, Ordinance eighteen-ninety-one, an ordinance to amend Table 205-38 of Article Four, Zoning District Regulations of Chapter 205, the Papillion Zoning Ordinance, to allow custom manufacturing in the LC Limited Commercial District by special use permit. The applicant is the City of Papillion, this is the custom manufacturing ordinance amendment. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen-ninety-one? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes. Next one's a special item, Item F8, Resolution R20-0151, a resolution to approve a memo of understanding with Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation, Inc., providing for the use of city properties south of Sumter Amphitheater as a memorial. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20-0151? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Klug. Going to call for proponents, some of the representatives of the foundation are here, I'd like them to invite them up and introduce themselves and share a little bit about the project and if you'd state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Black. My name is Howard Ball and I am the Community and Public Relation Chairman for the Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Foundation and Tom Brown is the president of the State Council of BVA, Vietnam Veterans of America, came with me tonight and I'm here to tell you a little bit about our vision and what we want to do in these two acres out by south of Sumter Theater.
And just before you start, council, you do have a packet at your table and we'll make sure this is public as well.
About two years ago, sorry.
I'm sorry, you're very welcome.
No, no problem. About two years ago, at a Vietnam Veterans of America meeting we had here in Omaha, we talked, and it was around Veterans Day and we were talking about what we could do for the three-hundred-and-ninety-five Nebraska Vietnam veterans that were killed in Vietnam and the first thing that came to mind was a memorial and we talked about the type of memorial we wanted and there's a lot of memorials throughout the state and throughout the country, but we wanted something a little bit different, a little bit unique and we started putting a planning committee together, we put a board of directors together, we put elected officers and then we started appointing committee members. What we wanted to do, we wanted to make this different by adding not only the names of all three-hundred-and-ninety-five veterans on an obelisk out there, but also make this a history and educational memorial. What I mean by that is, we're going to have eight to nine obelisks, ten feet high and on there we can put all kinds of information, we can put the names of the veterans, of course, that were KIA, but we're also going to put what happened during the ten years of the war from sixty-five to seventy-five. There's a lot of things that happened not only in Vietnam that were very noticeable and there's a lot of things going on in the United States also. We had, for example, we have an obelisk that we're working on that will be for the year nineteen-sixty-eight. Well, nineteen-sixty-eight, we had two assassinations in the country, we had, we also had riots and we had protests and we had a little turmoil, kind of like what we, I don't want to say like we're going through now, but you know, we have no assassinations, thank goodness. But anyway, we came up with that and what else we wanted to do was, we wanted to put some iconic figures out at the memorial and one thing was a Huey helicopter and everybody kind of knows what a Huey helicopter is and it was the main helicopter used in the Vietnam War. So, we searched for one and we found one back east and it's currently being shipped back to us, it'll be refurbished and it'll be the main part of the memorial. The biggest part of the memorial was finding a place and we searched for six, seven months trying to find a place and then one of the members made a call through the City of Papillion and talked to Mayor Black and told him what we were looking for and he got back to us and the site is absolutely perfect for what we want to do. It's just enough acreage, it's high enough up, it's very visible and it's close to the Nebraska, the cemetery, National Cemetery, out on Schramm Road and Highway Fifty. So, we decided to pursue that further and that's how we put together the MOU and that's why I'm here tonight and we put together also a honorary committee and honorary committee are some names that people would know and that hold positions of either businessmen, people that were politicians. So, we have honorary members is Mayor Haldob, ex-Mayor Haldob, we have Chuck Hegel and which he and his brother were the only two brothers in Vietnam that served in the same unit for the whole ten years. There was never two brothers that were in the same unit. We also have Bob Carey, who is a Medal of Honor recipient and we have seven Medal of Honor recipients from Nebraska, so Nebraska has a lot of history. And we also have the Mayor Black, who's an honorary committee member and we have the president of Bellevue University and the president of Bellevue University has been a mainstay in this project. We probably have about, I would say fifty people working on this project right now and every single one of them's a volunteer. Nobody's getting paid a penny, they all do it on their own time and Bellevue has just been wonderful. We've used their IT department, we've used their education department, their fundraising department and they're all helping us, you know, with this project. So, everybody's kind of been on board and Bellevue University has been a great partner for us in this and continues to be so. So, I would gladly ask, answer any questions that you might have. I wanted to keep this kind of short and to the point and I know you've all seen pictures of it and we can answer any questions for you, be more than happy to.
I think one of the other things on the educational component is Bellevue is also helping writing a curriculum that can actually be used in the schools that are age-appropriate and Dr. Rickley is participating on the committee as well. So, education, it's moving beyond the site and it's really making an impact. Mr. Stube?
Yes, just some general questions with regard to what kind of fundraising, how much money are you looking to get, if it all comes together, what kind of schedule are you proposing?
We put together a budget for three-point-six million dollars and we have a fundraising committee who's headed by Lisa Jorgensen, who's a member, works at Bellevue University and that's what she does, a part of her job and we have a grant writer at Strawhecker Company who deals in fundraising and we've had more Zoom calls and meetings that I'd like to even think about, but we're reaching out to everybody and what I do is I talk to a lot of groups, anywhere from rotaries to veterans groups to, you know, anybody, Kiwanis Clubs, anything like that and tell them about our project.
How about a targeted schedule, do you have something in mind?
We'd like to break ground about a year from now.
Any other council discussion? Just want to thank you for the partnership. From the first time we got a phone call, Mr. Gown and I sat with the team and we literally, we didn't have this site in mind when we started talking, we just said Papillion would love to host something like this and we got on GIS and we looked at all land, public and private, just kind of drove the streets on GIS and kind of landed on this site and I think we all at about the same times, probably a very appropriate site and it's been a good partnership. We didn't have very many meetings and I think we had the basic structure, the MOU developed and we really wanted a partnership, we wanted it long-term. One of the important things for everybody was, once the project is built and people on the committee start aging and moving away, how do we know thirty years from now it still looks good? And maintenance responsibilities were a really important conversation and again, I think we were both on the same page the whole time and you'll see that in the MOU. The land is still owned by the city, we modeled this actually after the lease agreements we've done with Portal, the Boy Scout Cabin and PVFD, Inc., it's been a good model and so it's still owned by the city, but we grant a license to them, so it's not even a dollar a year lease, it's just a perpetual license for fifty years. But an important part of it then is with being city, some of their regular routine maintenance falls under our Parks Department and so we'll continue doing the regular routine maintenance and they'll come in and do the special things and then because budgets and everything could change on the city side, part of their fundraising actually is to build an endowment for maintenance and so we'll have an annual reimbursement from the foundation back to the city, but we will actually then do the maintenance. So, I think it's a really, really good partnership, so I just want to thank you a lot for everything involved in that. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nay.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it. Committee reports, I think both the ad hoc committee and public facilities met tonight and I think coincidentally, it's the same people on both committees, so just look for an update for those.
So, I'm going to represent the ad hoc committee temporarily.
Can you turn on your mic? Thank you.
I'm going to represent the ad hoc committee temporarily because we elected our chairman and you know how that goes, the guy that doesn't show up is the chairman, so Mr. Sunday's our new chairman. But anyway, we zoomed with Jody tonight because she's quarantined. We talked over a few things, we did make a motion to keep her on board, her company on board for another four years and then she asked us a few questions, we all answered them, so we got a good idea what's going on and she's got a good idea what to look for when she starts everything up, so it was a good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Public Facilities Committee. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, that would be me. The Public Facilities Committee met and we only had one item on our agenda, it may turn out to be a fairly large item. We were discussing the possibility of modifying the way that we have residential garbage collection in Papillion and going, you know, because in the couple of months here, we're going to issue permits for garbage collection services and we issue half a dozen or more permits, at least four, I believe, for residential garbage collection. It has long been discussed, go back to two thousand and three, there was a proposal made at one time to the council as to going to a single unified contractor who would collect the garbage. Well, we're going to re-explore that and bring that back up. We are starting by asking during the permit process to provide the city with some information so that we can then decide if we want to move forward, how we would move forward, what the benefits and detriments would be. So, the committee has asked the staff to, when they issue the garbage collection permit applications, to require the contractors to provide addresses of the people they serve so that we can come up with a count, so that we can know, you know, what the collection status is in the city, to identify the days that they collect the garbage there, so that we can identify, you know, what is happening out there, to identify the trucks that they use to pick up that garbage, so we can have some information on how many trucks are actually crossing our streets every day, you know, throughout the week. That information will be required to get a permit this year, this coming year, for garbage collection in Papillion. I think that'll be done in the next couple of months, so if anybody has any comments or questions or desires on that, they should speak with staff on that very quickly. We also recommended that the staff develop a sample request for proposals that would then lead to issuing one or more permits, a limited number of permits, either one or two, three perhaps, for collection in the city. Moving more toward the unified one-collector model, see and develop a request for proposal and then the council can decide if we want to go out and get the additional information, if we want to find out what the advantages of that would be, so that we can move forward or not move forward in at least in an informed manner. So, the staff will develop that so that there would be essentially just one permit granted every year. That will then ultimately be brought back to the city council in some fashion, so if you have any additional ideas, contact a committee member.
Thank you very much. Next would be comments from the floor, I see we've got some scouts with us. You guys want to come up and introduce yourself? Let us know your name and... Let us know your name and maybe what troop or pack you're with, and what brings you out?
Hi, I am Casey Torian. I am here with Troop 60 to help with the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Thank you.
I am Aiden Olivas. I'm with Troop 60, and I am also working on the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Thank you for coming out. Did you learn anything?
Yes.
I won't ask you what. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for doing scouts. Do you have any other comments from the floor? Seen none, any council comments? Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah, I want to take a moment to advertise something and then, secondly, commend staff for what they did this past weekend for a very fine group. This past weekend, I had the privilege of playing in a golf fundraiser for the Paralyzed Veterans of America Great Plains Chapter. And I played with a La Vista resident, longtime member of the Papillion community. He was able to play in this. He's a member of the Paralyzed Veterans of America group, and he was able to play in this golf tournament simply because that cart there is owned by the city of Papillion, and it was provided by the staff out at Eagle Hills Golf Course. That Barry there, the player, he uses that fairly regularly out there at Eagle Hills. Rob Spomer and his staff at Eagle brought that over to Tiburon over in Gretna and provided it so that he could play. It was, I'll tell you, it was noticed by quite a number of people. We had a lot of comments about that cart. We encouraged everybody, okay, that's from Eagle Hills in Papillion, and that's being provided by the city of Papillion for this fundraiser. That's called the solo rider. It's obviously a single person. What it does, it allows somebody with limitations and restrictions on mobility to get out there and exercise and play golf like anybody else could. And that fits very closely with the goals of the Paralyzed Veterans of America purposes. They raised a significant amount of money this past weekend that will go to helping paralyzed veterans and other veterans with limited mobilities get out and enjoy life. And I just want to bring it all to the attention, and anybody who's out there watching, who has limited mobility or knows somebody with limited mobility but wants to play golf, well, you can do it in Papillion because we have a cart there provided years ago, and it's used infrequently, but you contact, apparently they also have a league out there that also, Omaha has a cart that's housed out there and is used. So I want to draw it to everybody's attention. It's something we do here at Papillion, and I'm very proud of it and very honored to be able to participate and want to bring it to everybody's attention. And again, thank the staff at Eagle Hills for the work that they provided in making that available.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments?
Most of the things on the calendar have just been COVID-related and legislative-related, so the normal meetings continue there. So if you ever have any questions in regards to the Health Department, we still do have that weekly call every Thursday, all of the jurisdictions in Sarpy, a number of representatives from the county. We also bring in Plattsmouth with the Health Director. So if you ever have any questions, let us know. And then the legislature is done now, but if you have any items of interest for the legislature, now is actually a very good time to bring them up because we can be working over the summer and then monitoring the interim hearings, so we're prepared to actually have something introduced. And this next session is the beginning of the next biennium, so we actually have two years to work on it. So if there's items of interest, let us know. Also, thank you to all of the council members that participated in the Recreation Master Plan. More for the public. We're kicking off a public process to update our park and recreation master plan. Our previous plan is probably a little over 10 years old, and a lot of the items in that plan have been accomplished, especially with the opening of Papillion Landing. And so we want to look out the next 25 to 50 years of what's Papillion needs. So we will be having a number of public sessions and focus groups and listening sessions, and that'll be updated this next year and guide budget planning for the years after. So that's a very important reminder. September 15, we got a Public Safety Committee meeting. We get the next city council meeting. Want to reiterate again, at the end of September, we have the Flights of Honor. If people are not familiar with that, Patriotic Productions, which is the ones that have put on the honor flights, taking people to DC, veterans, every one of those flights, they documented. And now that the honor flights are done, they have taken all that documentation and built a display of the honor flights, and we're going to have that for three or four days at the landing. So it'd be a wonderful event. Also, the Vietnam Veterans Presentation that we just had and you approved, there's a great website up that talks about it, so I'd encourage you to look at that and share it with people. Again, it's Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation, so it's mvvmf.org, and there's a lot of good information out there. And then having the scouts here reminded me, we did put up the official historical marker at the Boy Scout Cabin, and so that now is an official historical site for the state of Nebraska. So encourage people to go out and look at that as well. Any other comments from council? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.